Welcome to the nightly rant with your hosts.
Mike.
And Toria.
This is the show where we examine society from a sarcastic point of view.
If you like insane conversations, this is definitely the show for you.
Let's get into today's topic. YPN people, I don't know about you, but I love helping out a friend. That's why I want to shout out my friend, Brian Little and his podcast, Your Favorite Blockhead. This is the only show that manages to weave together peanuts and MMA into one heck of an amazing podcast. You can find your favorite blockhead wherever your favorite podcasts reside and at your favorite blockhead.com. Do me a huge favor and listen to Brian's show. You'll be entertained and you will help out a friend. Now, as I said, let's get into today's topic.
Clearly I'm annoyed by a lot of things.
That's an understatement.
An understatement. It's the understatement of the fucking year, dude.
You are annoyed by literally everything.
I'm annoyed by the people. I'm annoyed by the things. I'm annoyed by the people doing the things and I'm annoyed by the things doing the people. But that's really awkward, nevermind.
You're strange, I'll give you that. But see, here's the thing.
Am I being stalked by a cat?
No.
Okay.
What about what we just witnessed at the homeless town hall meeting?
That was the most annoying thing I've ever experienced in my life. I'm more annoyed by that homeless town hall meeting than I was by the build that wall meeting in Los Alamitos.
Yeah.
Now that was more disgusting.
And that was, and that was more disgusting, but also um way more organized.
Right? This, okay, 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 bro. Started out, they, they had a moderator who was supposed to moderate this shit in a non biased way. And I'll give him the credit, he was non biased, but he didn't fucking moderate. He just like, he gave us this whole like 10 minute spiel of what his stupid plan was and then he didn't follow his stupid plan.
Right, and it involved, you must write down your question. And the point being, the reason you write down your question is because he wants you to be short and succinct and then he's going to read the question. Whereas you know, if, if, if your question is, why is Parker orange and white? Well, how you could ask it is like, well, you know, Parker's a really cute cat. I really enjoy looking at him and he's so sweet and he has such a nice personality. Don't you think he has a nice personality?
Yes.
And, and he's just so cute and I just don't know. So why is he orange and white anyway? You see how long it took me to get to the question? But if I wrote the question down, bro would just go, so why is Parker orange and white? Boom, we've asked the question, no big emotional buildup. I liked that approach, but did he stick to that?
Of course not, but I feel like, I feel like we need to take 17 steps back and tell people what the fuck we're talking about.
Why, they don't listen to our show?
Did we tell everybody we were going to the homeless town hall meeting?
The homeless shelter stuff all along.
The city held a homeless town hall meeting tonight that was well attended by dumb asses. Now continue.
You know what it is? People are ruled by fear. And that is what's got these people afraid right now is the, they think that it's going to bring crime and they're expecting like, see, we're going to ask the police chief. It's going to bring crime, isn't it? Because they know he has to be truthful.
And when he is truthful, they call him a liar.
When he's truthful and says, no, actually, I've talked to the other cities and not a single one of them has seen an increase in crime around the shelters.
I'm sorry.
Not a single one. And then they go, you're a liar. Well, dude, the only way he could have not been called a liar was to agree with them.
I'm sorry, but do I listen to Joe Jackass McDuck that happens to live over there behind yonder potential homeless shelter? Or do I listen to 30 year chief of police and 24 year city manager and 19 year somebody else? Do I listen to them or the dumb ass that lives behind the proposed shelter site? Really?
And the point here is, point here is, you know, you're going to call it dumb ass, that's good, you can handle it your way. I'm going to say it's the passionate folk. Because the passionate folk, they don't, they don't bother to use logic. God damn it, my brain says this, but I don't care. My heart says this, so it has to be this.
I saw a homeless person taking a shit on the sidewalk last week.
While he was stealing a package off of my neighbor's porch and looking inside car windows while riding on a bicycle backwards with a backpack.
With no shirt on and what are we going to do when you put 150 of these people right in my backyard? What are we going to do then? How is my property value not going to decrease when you put all those people right in my backyard?
And then they're told, bad schools have way substantially more effect on property value than a homeless shelter ever did. But the point is, the majority of places where there are homeless shelters continue to see the market value stay the same as anything else nearby, anything comparable. And that, and the point being, maybe it went up, maybe it went down, but if it went down, so did the neighboring areas. And if it went up, so did the neighboring areas. So you can't say that a shelter increases property values and you can't say it decreases property values. But then they try to find that one guy out of a hundred million that it didn't work that way and go, see, it didn't work. Well, I'm sorry, but I'm a listen to the 1,999,999 other people who say that it worked. And you're the only one out of two million who says it didn't work. I'm going to listen to them.
Well, and then I, seriously, the best thing I heard tonight was the example from the moderator about how he worked in Watts. And there's shootings every freaking day and people dying all over the place and their property values are still going up. So which is worse, a homeless shelter or people shooting other people to death?
Bingo.
I think the shooting is worse personally, but I'm not entirely sure all the people in the room there agreed with, agree with me. Because they seem to think homeless people are like the fucking bubonic plague.
Yes, but see, but that's the perfect example and you're right, it's the perfect example. Because he's making that, he himself clearly believes that the drugs prostitution and shooting that goes on in Watts is worse than a homeless shelter. He clearly believes that.
Watts is like the super ghetto, right?
Right, and he's saying, property values went up in Watts, of course, they're going to keep going up in Buena Park.
Matter of fact, okay, so if you and I were like going to check out a house and like, that's the area we wanted to look in because I don't know, we really wanted kids to go to that school. I don't know, whatever.
We wanted to live near President's.
Okay, I got you. Anyway, so, so.
Very patriotic people. We don't want to live in tree area, we don't want to live in sand area, but we want to live in the President's area.
Anyway, whatever, we're confusing people.
That's the President's area.
Okay.
That's what the neighborhood is called, the presidential tract.
I thought it was the sand tract.
Partially the sand tract.
Oh, so that's like the dividey line, anyway. Besides the point, we're looking for a house in that freaking area.
Bingo.
We want to live six hun, less than 660 feet away from this shelter. Okay. And so we go and we look at this house and it's like the perfect freaking house and it has like a podcast studio already built and it has like all the cool things. Like a thousand rooms and it's right in our price range and there's a homeless dude sleeping on the fucking driveway. Are we going to buy that house? No, I'm not going to buy a house that a homeless dude is already comfortable sleeping on my freaking driveway. But if there's a yonder homeless shelter and I don't see any homeless people and the trees are all green and sparkly and there's no people shit all over the boulevard and there aren't any tents in the nearby yonder area and homeless dudes are on my driveway, I'm going to buy that freaking house. And because it's so damn perfect, we might even make a super competitive offer over what they're asking for it. Like, perfect house, I'm talking perfect.
Correct, I hear you.
Like, I don't understand where the logic of these people's brain is. Would you rather have them sleeping on your driveway? Would you rather have them in a secured facility 500 feet away from you?
Well, and why, but, and also why are people, all right, the city manager makes a good point. Logically, if I were walking to my neighborhood, which is up inside there, I would go out onto Western, make a left. Because that's the shortest distance on a busy street. And then I'd make that other left onto Monroe because Monroe is not a busy street.
Sounds good.
Then I could continue walking and then veer off left or right into the neighborhood, whichever direction my house was.
Right.
And he's saying it's not as logical to go all the way down to Lincoln, cut all the way over to Knott, then go all the way up to Monroe. Now you've lived on a busy street all the way from the school to Knott and Monroe.
But then the lady got up and talked and she was talking about how the schoolchildren are getting harassed on Monroe. That's the exact point, lady. The schoolchildren don't walk on Lincoln to get home, they walk on Western and Monroe to get home. And they're trying to clean up the people from right there and put them somewhere where the children don't walk.
Exactly.
Duh.
And they can't do that without the beds being in place. And then someone, in order to defeat that very valid argument, someone's now trying to come around with the whole, well, but if those 300 beds are filled, then they can't enforce that anti camping laws. Wrong. The mandate was that if there were, say there were 5,000 homeless people in the last count.
There were actually 1,800.
In this, in the north, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's fine.
That's our area.
Say there's, say there's, say there's 1,800, right?
Yeah.
Your responsible, your area is responsible to house at least 60% of that. Because what the judge is trying to do is he's trying to make the argument, okay, you know what? Law enforcement, you're saying that 40% of those you encounter don't want any help. First off, I'm going to kind of trust that measurement, you know why? Because I guarantee you, the police chief and the commissioner, they talked about it and they said, hey, in their reporting for their shift, they need to mark down how many of these things happened.
Yeah.
Little checkbox. And then they count them up so they know how much time they're spending on a given issue. So yeah, if 40% of the homeless people they encounter say, no thanks, I would rather live out here. All right, good, we'll, we'll go with that number and the judge goes, so plaintiffs, are you willing to? Well, it's probably more like 30%. Well, but would you say 40% is close enough for argument sake? Well, yeah, it is, 40% is close enough. Okay, great, so then we're going to focus on the 60%.
First.
You know, that we both agree want help. Because if you're saying, Mr. Police Officer, that these 40% don't want help, then you're admitting that these 60% over here do want help and the plaintiff wants to help the people that want help. So guess what? We're going to focus on the 60%, it's genius.
Right, and even if.
Kills the other side's argument.
Even if it is 70%, they come off the street in waves.
Well, yeah, exactly, so it's, it's, it'll work, they'll eventually get those same number of people off the street.
Right.
But he's brilliant because then on top of that, he's like, okay, so what was, what'd you say there was 1,800? Okay, so that would be 720 would be 40%. So you take 1,800 minus 720 and you have 1080, all right?
Yeah.
That's how many beds you need in the North Spa. You need 1,080 beds.
And they're already pretty freaky close.
1,080 beds, if they're all filled up, I can continue to let you enforce the law because you've shown me that that other 40% they don't want the help anyway.
And if that number needs to be readjusted later and another shelter needs to be added, it is what it is. But the law is going to allow them to enforce all the laws at the 60% threshold.
Right, and it's reasonable because.
I think so too.
Because if, he's absolutely right, like the police officer is going, well, come on now, you know, these homeless people, they don't want help. They're, you know, they, they just, there's 40% of them that don't want any help. And the judge is like, ding ding. Well, I know that the lady on this side wants to help everybody who wants help. And I also know that she'll admit that there's a certain percentage that don't want help. And I know the numbers aren't going to match, but see how I'm going to play this is, hey lady, you're getting 60%. That's a win, that's more than half, that's a win.
Right.
So a little, a couple will have to stay out there a little longer. Sorry, I mean, I know it doesn't sound compassionate, but that is better than not doing anything at all.
It's a step.
Right. And, and he made it so that once you hit that 60% threshold and you've offered those number of beds, go for it, bro. Just have at it. You want to arrest people because they spit some gum out on the, on the street? Go to it. Make sense?
The only way that I can like, yeah, no, nevermind, my example's stupid, it makes sense.
Does it?
Yep.
You're sure?
Yep.
Okay, good. I wasn't sure myself.
No, you're, you're good, it made sense.
All right, well, so what do we experience there?
Dumb asses.
What I'm experiencing and, and see, I'm going to tell you that I'm not necessarily ready to label people dumb ass over this, okay? There is a couple of dumb ass comments like, like the um police chief saying that the idea that you open up a shelter brings people from other places to that shelter is a myth. First of all, here's one reason why I would believe that. Because the statistics say, from that UCI study.
Yeah.
That um.
80%?
That 80% have lived their last permanent address in the city where they're homeless.
Yeah.
So that would mean that even if the other 20% crossed over, it's more likely that they lived in Cyprus and now they're homeless in Buena Park or vice versa.
Or lived in Huntington Beach or lived in Costa Mesa.
Close, close, close by.
They have lived in Orange County for 10 or more years is essentially what the study, it said their last permanent residence or have lived in Orange County for more than 10 years.
And so, so bottom line being that those people, once the number of beds are there, those people are going to get dealt with.
Right.
And people are thinking, oh, well, the police can't do this and the police can't do that. Well, see, in California, if I'm chasing you for a crime, I'm allowed to keep chasing you into the other jurisdiction.
Because you don't have a jurisdiction.
The crime started, right, the crime started in my city, but people think that by switching cities. So the reason that I'm back to why I'm not ready to label them dumb asses is I think they're just misinformed. And I think they're just parroting back information that someone convinced them is true. And they're going emotionally, they're not going logically, it's 100% emotionally.
Okay.
And therefore that doesn't make them stupid, just makes them emotional.
Well, I don't necessarily think stupid and dumb ass are the same thing. I think dumb ass is more of a choice.
Alright, cool, let's hear it.
I think dumb ass is more of a choice to be a colossally oblivious person.
So, okay, so based on how you define that and based on what I told you I thought was right, I think we're on the same, same page.
I agree.
We actually agree because I'm basically saying that they made the choice to believe this. That doesn't make them stupid.
Right.
The part that is kind of dumb, when you think about it, is not doing your own research. I mean, that's like, it's like when we talk about voting and you know how I rail against the whole idea of, oh, well, my neighbor told me. Well, what did you find out? Well, I didn't even bother to look, I just listened to my neighbor. That's great, you just gave your neighbor a second vote, you dummy.
But even that's not stupid, that's still a choice, that still just makes you a dumb ass.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, it's related to that same concept that we talked about with politics. Why give somebody a second opinion? Why do they get to have two, two says in the matter?
The people that were stupid, the person who claims they work for the county, stupid, 100% moron.
Well, yeah, she's part of why I say, you know, I'm listening every single time to the 1,999,999. Yeah, I know you can find anomalies.
Right.
And I'm going to tell you that even if it's 5% of an anomaly, I don't care, it's an anomaly.
Right.
I'm going with what the other, I'm going to be like the judge and I'm going to go, okay, great. I'll concede that to you, that 5% is yours. We're going to now focus on.
The 95%.
The 95% that we both agree on.
Exactly.
And here's the thing, well, we don't really agree because you think, well, here's the thing though, I'm willing to concede that the 5% is right. And now we both agree on the 95% that's also right.
You know, if.
Done.
If more people handled discussions that way, there'd be a lot less rage on the internet.
Well, it's funny because it's only something that I've noticed and sort of started to argue that way because of two different things. The book that I've been reading about the habits of, of, you know, high performance people. And then those memos that I've been reading that talk a lot about strategy and mental like psychology of marketing. Because they do, they talk about like, well, you know, which way is going to be better? This way, blah, 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 or zing, zing, boom, zing, zing. This way is obviously better because it, it's more exciting and it, and it sucks you in. The other way is just kind of like, huh, huh, huh. It's like Charlie Brown, you know, when you hear his teacher talk. Who the hell talks that way? It's just to make it generic.
Second dumb ass tonight, to get back to my list now that we sidebared.
Okay.
Second dumb ass was Mr. Comparing apples to oranges.
And then proceeded to compare apples to guavas.
As I put it so eloquently.
As you put it so eloquently.
He said that you cannot compare this new shelter that currently has no name to a shelter that is like 10 or 15 minute drive away, run by the same people who are going to run the shelter. Because one is in a commercial building that is near residential and the other is in an industrial park by a strip club. So that's comparing apples to oranges. Okay, I can respect it, that's comparing apples to oranges.
If you want to split hairs, sure.
But then comparing the vote on this homeless shelter to the same city council members voting down a condo attached to a hideous pile of dog shit mall.
That was their bane of their existence at that time.
Right.
Because that place was threatening to go bankrupt. So sure, let's approve more development from the place that's going to go bankrupt.
That's comparing apples to apples, no, that's comparing apples to motherfucking guavas. Like seriously, that's the most ridiculous bullshit I've ever heard. He thought that that was the same freaking thing. So that's dumb ass number two. Because Mr. 10,000 pounds of research is too effing stupid to know what he's talking about.
Okay.
Dumb ass number three is dumb ass number two's wife because I can't freaking stand people who just talk shit through an entire question and answer period and then like catcall and cheer loudly because they heard one fucking word they agreed with. That reminds me of those people in Los Alamitos who were being super racist to that Asian dude because he was speaking and his accent was very strong.
Sounded like, like really like your stereotypical Asian man.
Until he agreed with them.
Who just got off the boat and then, and they were like, go back to where you came from, go back to where you came from. And then he was like, but I'm, even as an immigrant, you know, I believe that we, we should enforce our laws and that they should come here legally and blah, 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 and all of a sudden they were like, that's right, brother.
That's what it reminds, that's what she reminds me.
So hypocritical.
My guess, I would bet money that that couple was in those crowds. They're that kind of idiot.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if the same kind of meeting would have happened in Buena Park, I'll put that out there because I don't think they give a shit about other cities.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of hesitant with my yes, but yeah, I'll agree with.
They're the type, they're the type.
They are, they are.
I think that dumb ass number four is our regular every meeting dumb ass who thinks she knows everything about everything. She's just stupid and narcissistic and I hate her.
Yes, narcissistic.
Those are the four stupid people tonight, everybody else, kind of a dumb ass.
Well, this has been a refreshing night.
Why?
Because you ranted the majority of the time, but I got to go off on what I felt was important as well. But what was great is just like the percentages idea where, hey, I don't care if you want to say it's 40%, 50%, 60%. I mean, if you're going to get unreasonable, I'm going to show you the polling data to prove to you that you're being unreasonable about the percentage of who does or doesn't want help. But once I get you to focus in on a reasonable number, I'm more than happy to concede the rest to you. I mean, my idea is to get it a little bit at a time. And if I can't take all 5,000 people off the streets, boom, like that, and it takes an extra year or maybe two years. The point is, you're making no decision at all accomplishes nothing.
You think about it, if you focus on the people who want help the most first, then you're going to get those people through the shelter and into new housing and all that stuff. Because that's the goal, right? It's meant to be a transition period where they're connected to services or jobs or whatever the fuck they need. And then they move on to low income housing or whatever supportive housing or whatever is best for them at that point in time. Which leaves room for the people who were kind of skeptical, but now we're seeing the system functioning properly to come into the shelter and get the help they need. And then you can focus on the people who at the very beginning didn't want help at all.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, didn't the, didn't the um CityNet guy kind of say that?
Yes.
Like, okay, fine, so there's 40% that don't want help, great, I can go with that number if you want. I don't agree with it, I can go with that number if you want. That still means there's 60% that do want help. And that's the thing that people don't want, don't want to hear. And that's the problem all across the board is that they want to battle back and forth. They want you to tell them they're stupid and no, it's only, it's not 40%, it's only 30% and I'm going to stand my ground. No, screw that. Give them their damn extra 10% because now you're on common ground, you both agree.
Right.
100%, you made it to, so that you agree. And here's what they do invariably, they find something else to disagree with.
Of course, because they're people. Then I think about it, I think about it and like, where do they get that 40% number? Why are, why, when we went down to the riverbed, was it more like 95% wanted help and 5% were like packing their shit and piecing out? And then I think about it and I think if you and I had gone to that bar yonder down the street that we could walk to and we were kind of drunk and probably shouldn't be coming home. And an Uber driver is offering us a ride and a friendly neighborhood police officer is offering us a ride. Who are you going to pick every single time?
The Uber driver.
Exactly, why? Because you don't trust the police. Why should a homeless person trust the police? Are they going to take help from a police officer who may put them in jail or may find them or may do something else that would be negative towards their life and make their life even worse than it already is? Or are they going to trust the friendly neighborhood CityNet person who is like bringing them a cookie or something and helping them out?
When they want to give them the referral, um what CityNet will do if they're out there by themselves is they'll call it in to the PD and then the PD runs it and comes back with, okay, everything's good. But like when the guy was there with the police officer when I was out, he seemed very hesitant to give the police officer his info.
Right.
And his brother finally convinced him, hey, man, I did it and I'm, and I'm good now. I'm on my way to getting housing, I want you to come with me.
Yeah.
And he said, okay, and he gave him the, his info, but he was hesitant and.
I get it.
And he was a younger dude.
I get it. I feel like homeless people probably in general have a very negative impression of police officers. And I don't, I don't think that's the police officer's fault and I don't think that's the homeless people's fault. I think it just is one of those things and it is what it is, they are two things that don't get along like cat and mouse.
Well, and then that's the other thing though, okay? Even then, what other people will say to me when I say the whole, well, okay, fine, I agree with you, you know, it's.
Yeah.
This, then they'll say, then they'll say, oh, but you know, there's, you know, there's like 48% that are on drugs. So, okay, so then that means 52% who aren't.
Also.
You're saying we shouldn't help those who are on drugs. Okay, fine, how about I just agree with you on that for the sake of this discussion? And now we go deal with those 52%. They never want to actually solve the problem. And what we're doing by kind of conceding is we're saying, you know what?
Taking away the objection.
We could, we could be assholes and be here to the bitter end for what we really believe. Or we could realize that progress is the, what you want to see. And I think that's what people don't really want. They claim they want the homeless gone, but what they really want is they want them made into. But what they really want is they want them made into, turned into criminals and thrown into, to like some concentration camp somewhere.
Yeah.
That's what they really want. And when they really get down to it, if someone could be a hundred percent anonymous where they were completely blurred to anyone's sight and they couldn't tell their voice, I bet you most of those people would admit that they just want the homeless banished to a concentration camp.
That sounds like a perfect reality TV show. Where you like promise them like up and down, but you leave a fine print in the contract somewhere that they sign that is like, just kidding, um-
So we're gonna cut this part out because I just had a great idea that I'm gonna write like a short story. I, I did for a reason because we need to talk about something. I'm gonna write a short story about how they take the, their solution to the homeless problem is they take them and they ship them off to a concentration camp. And how people just look the other way until someone comes along and says, remember what people said about Hitler and how they'll never let that happen again? Well, look at what you're allowing to have happen.
You know, homeless people were one of the targets of Hitler?
The only, well, well, the only difference really is you're mostly talking about Jews versus homeless people.
Well.
You're converting the, you're switching the type, who the people are, but the variable is the same. He's trying to exterminate them.
Well, let's be real. Homeless people in that day and age were gypsies. And gypsies went before the Jews to the concentration camps.
Right.
So that really is apples to apples, bro.
Well, right, and that's the thing.
That's how you do apples to apples, dude.
And that's the thing though about all of that. The, the the people, they, 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 I think that they see it, but they choose not to believe it. And to your way of thinking, they called, you call them dumbasses, but my way of thinking, I kinda call them liars. Because, well, if you see it, but you choose not to believe it, that's different from seeing it and not believing it. You know, when you don't believe something, you don't believe something. That's real. That's a hundred percent truth. But when you see something and you just don't choose not to believe it, that's a choice you made. Hundred percent. You know, I did use the choose.
But-
But we're coming from the same, to the same conclusion, I believe. And I think that's ironic. I think it's ironic, but long and short of it, we've rambled on forever. I wanted to say one last time-
Finish my reality TV show idea.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Anyway, so you have this contract for these people, say whatever the fuck they want. Completely anonymous, face blurred, they're like completely black on the screen. They put on an anonymous mask, like completely anonymous. And, uh, somewhere in the contract is the, just kidding, fine print that nobody, you know, nobody ever actually reads contracts except this would weed out the dumb people because they'd actually read it or the smart people because they'd actually read it. And then you unmask them after what they said and you just shave the shit out of these giant pieces of shit. That's all. That's my idea. I think it'd be funny. I would watch the hell out of that. It wouldn't last very long.
Trying to wrap my brain around that, but I think that it's gonna have the same similar backlash that Live PD has had. And that, I always think it's kinda stupid that cities bow down to this kinda pressure. And if I was a, on a city council at one of these cities, I certainly would not bow down to this kinda pressure. But they decide for the good of law enforcement, that's what the whole purpose of the Live PD is, to, for the good of law enforcement and show people that, you know, peace officers are not bad people. Um, they create this, uh, how do you call it? Film crew that follows them around all week long. And then on Friday night and Saturday night, they broadcast live. And then they kinda intersperse some of the recording stuff. The whole idea is to, it's like, I told you once before, it's a marketing ploy for the police department to make friends with the citizens in their, in their city who were kind of like, you know, there's always those people who love the police. The police could do anything and they're perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Then there's the people who the police could be perfect and they, these people would never like the police.
Uh huh.
What the police are after with their marketing is everybody in the middle of those two.
Yeah, they wanna push them to the positive side.
Side. Exactly. They want them on their side. And they're an easier target. Cause they're not, they're truly undecided.
Yeah.
So you send them a nice emotional marketing message and you pull them over to your side. I don't know. I thought, I just think it's interesting to see how it's actually more interesting looking at this from the outside because we can talk about it. But like watching how city government issues work and evolve. And you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
In like, my article that probably by the time people hear this will have already been released. Um, I will tell you that I've heard the city's argument before. And I've seen the backup data to that argument. And it is a hundred percent valid.
Good.
They actually have researched it and they have determined these things.
Honestly, it seems absolutely assidine to say I would absolutely love this homeless shelter to be as close to our house as it will be.
Well, yeah, but that's because we're being realistic about this. But we're being realistic about the situation. Like there, like that one lady on the, um, live chat was saying, you know, people need to understand that, you know, we have to do something to help these-
And the lady in front of you, she says she doesn't particularly like that location. She finds it very close to where she lives her life. But she completely understands that something needs to be done. And if she has to make the sacrifice and have that in her backyard, she is okay with that as long as these people get the help that they need.
And that's the kind of attitude that there needs to be. Because people, people say, like I just said a minute ago, they say they want to help the homeless, but really what they wanna do is ship them off to a concentration camp somewhere. And that's just sick and disgusting.
I wanted to tell you something I absolutely love.
Okay.
These people-
So I tell you something that's sick and disgusting and you tell me something you love. That works really well. Go ahead.
No, no, no. It's gonna be sick and disgusting as well. And my love was sarcastic.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, so there are all these people who are like, I don't want this here. It's a residential neighborhood, blobbity, 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 blobbity. You know, the bullshit we heard like a hundred times. But they're not proposing anything in the city of Buena Park. They're proposing things in the city of Anaheim.
How about you go, how about you go use the Los Alamitos airbase? Well, first of all, that's federal government land.
So hold up, hold up. These people do not wanna cooperate with the other cities in, in the northern spa. Don't want to. I don't want their homeless. Keep their homeless away from me. But hold on a second. Let's send our homeless people to fucking Anaheim because Anaheim should have to deal with the problem. Does anyone, does anyone else see the flawed logic there? Anyone, anyone, even one fucking person. Come on now.
Problem. But that's the problem in that, okay. How it's been approached for a long time now is exactly that. Where one city tries to shuffle the problem off to another city.
Exactly.
And then the other cities get pissed off. So then they start saying, no, 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 no. So then it's, then this, now we're where we are. We need to get back to that point where they cooperate with one another. And that's what this whole proposal is. Is that you've got three regions and those regions have to cooperate with one another.
Well, I'm sorry. I have to believe what the judge said about him knowing all the cities in Orange County were dumping their homeless people into Anaheim and Santa Ana. I have to believe it. He fucking threatened them with a lawsuit if they didn't knock it off.
He threatened to indict their sitting mayor.
Yeah, so, okay. So I have to believe him. That's a big threat.
Bro.
Big threat. I have to believe him. He seems like a nice dude. Okay, so why is it that that's obviously true? Yet all of these people can't seem to figure out that they should be helping Anaheim and Santa Ana with the homeless problem going on in their cities? Why should Anaheim have to have what, six, six hundred beds now in their city?
Seven seventy.
Seven hundred and seventy beds in their city and Buena Park don't have any. Cause Buena Park was one of the cities he was referring to. He said it was everybody.
Yep. Oh, I don't doubt, and I don't doubt that that went on because that's exactly what caused all of the problem in the first place. Was the solution was dump it on someone else and let them deal with it.
Exactly.
And the hope was that one of those cities would find a compassionate solution that would work for everybody. And then they could just mimic it. But that just never happened.
Well, and it could have been, I don't, I don't wanna say anything bad about the city of Buena Park. It could have been as simple as them sharing a border and Buena Park police chasing them in their, into Anaheim inadvertently. Okay, so I, I respect-
Like they talked about how, oh, we ran across the street, not during Anaheim.
Right. But, but why should Anaheim have to take on the entire burden for all of North Orange County? Even if they're not paying for it and the other cities are, their police force shouldn't have to handle that all of it themselves.
Right. And that's what happens because that's, you know, that's the area they patrol.
Well, and it's inconvenient for the homeless people themselves. If I'm homeless and I'm in Yorblinda and you're bringing me to Anaheim, like, like West Anaheim, all the way by Buena Park, that's not exactly a short commute.
You know, I am laughing because, because while I agree with you on this last point, I can hear the, the I'm just gonna call them old codger types, talking about how, why, why do that home? Why are we worrying about that homeless person's rights to live closer to where they wanna work and stuff like that? Why do I, why don't I get that consideration? But they do.
Move if you wanna live close to where you work. Move.
No, but the point is, point is neither scenario is any different. No one's forcing him to live where he's living, as you just so eloquently said, so move. And nobody's forcing the homeless person into the shelter either.
Yep.
Those are choices those individual people get to make.
Well, exactly. So, like, it, you just put them everywhere and make it convenient for everybody. Make it convenient for the shuttles, make it convenient for the cities to disperse where they wanna disperse things. Keep everybody kind of in the area where they are and just shut the fuck up. Cause that's how I feel about this. Just, the people just need to shut the fuck up. And I'm sure that people listening think I need to shut the fuck up. So that's okay. You're welcome to feel that way.
I think Parker thinks you should shut the fuck up because he's been haunting you for at least twenty-five minutes.
And he's all ghosty.
Stalking all around with his orange and whiteness. And yes, my example earlier was when Parker first came to stalk you. And that was way at the beginning of this podcast.
So I guess that means Parker says, goodnight, everyone?
I think she also says, yes, tell it bye-bye. Thank you for listening to the nightly rant.
If you enjoyed the show, please give us a five star rating on Apple Podcasts or Google Play.
If you didn't enjoy the show, please just ignore that previous request for a rating.
This has been a Yogi's Podcast Network production.